You're recording.
All right, great. Thank you very much. That's not what we're supposed to be doing here. Okay, well, with that, I want to welcome everybody to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, March 25th. All rise of the election agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. I'm just gonna play with this for one more second because I'm this is what it needs to be. There we go. All right, great. Not that I like close ups. But it'll move around a little bit now. I know. It's a little too close. All right, with that, then, I guess, moving on to first election women's updates. Jean, you have just two kind of slides I prepared. I know that there's been a lot of conversation in the public about some of the referendum projects and just kind of where we are on those. And I just wanted to give a quick update. We've talked about this at other meetings. Also, at the town meeting, we went through like a lot of the projects, but I just thought I'd give a quick highlight. Do you want to go on to the next page? There we go. So, obviously, yeah, there we go. The Neck River Elementary School, exciting. It's been named now, so they have a name for the school. And we're actually going to have the advisors and the crew here later on the agenda, so I won't get into this, but just want to highlight again. You know, construction started in this month. We're having a groundbreaking in April, kind of an official one. The expectation is construction is going to be done by June 1st of 2025, with the school opening for September for the kids to move in. So we're on schedule for that still, and we'll talk more about that project later. Also, just wanted to kind of update people on where we are in Poulsen and the auditorium project. That's going to be something that's going to be a multi-year construction project. We hired in the fall, the board selectman had a lot of conversations about where we were going to go with the HVAC and how we're going to manage the project. And we hired BL companies. They're working on a full design development that will be engineering drawings and everything that will include the HVAC system and the auditorium. We're also coordinating this project with the town emergency shelter generator project. And just a reminder to people, we received now $1.5 million in grants to help fund that project. It's involving an installation of a sizable generator at Poulsen Middle School to turn that into our emergency shelter. So what we wanted to do is have these HVAC projects parallel with the generator project because there's a lot of overlap with the electrical work. So we're saving money by doing that, and we're coordinating the two together, but it does make it a little more complicated. And then there's a building committee working on the Poulsen project. And they're looking at the different, you know, schedules that would work in terms of, because, you know, unfortunately, we don't want to have construction necessarily going on during the school year, although we may end up having to do some of that. So they're going to be optimizing the construction schedule. It's very different than having a vacant plot of land to build whatever you want and not disrupt anybody. So we're having to coordinate this all with the school schedules and the school's needs. So there will be a schedule coming out once the final design development plan is finished about how this is all going to kind of start going into construction mode. And then the third thing we don't care a lot about is Brown School, which is going to be transitioning to a K through five school. That has also been a multi-year construction project. That was part of the bonding. And they actually have already done phase one that was done this last summer. And this is also work that is only being conducted primarily in the summer. There's a little bit going on during the school year, but includes renovations to the bathrooms, classrooms, and other spaces. And then, right now, we're in the process of doing a phase two. And then there will be a phase three in 2025. So there's a long list of improvements that's being expected at Brown to make sure the school is ready and high quality, obviously. It already is a high-quality school, but a lot of new bells and whistles are being introduced and making sure it's accommodating to the age bracket that's going to be in the school. So there's been a lot of progress made on that project as well.
Peggy, we may want to reinforce it, maybe it's
What happened to my?
There it is.
So, sorry, Jeannie. Jeannie, we skipped the academy side. There we go. Okay.
Can I just make a comment on your last point? So I think we may want to, it's funny, very timely that you gave a sub-date because two folks approached me today asking about, well, is there going to be an elementary school up north? And I explained how Brown is going to work, but I think there's a lot of myths out there of, you know, there's a new school happening, but and they see Brown still as the intermediate school.
Right.
Many need to do a little bit of marketing. I know Seth's on. Seth, if you can hear me. You know, BOA may want to really remind people that there isn't up north K through five school.
Yeah, there is, and this is all going to be a redistricting plan that goes into effect the summer of 2025. So kids will be shifted from Ryerson to Brown. Ryerson will be closed, and kids will be shifted from Jeffrey to the new school, and there might be a different blend in terms of, you know, the boundaries and everything. So, but basically, the elementary-age kids will be going into two really new buildings, you know. Except unless you're right now, Brown is fourth and fifth. Brown will now be K through five, or I know there's been discussion about maybe breaking up pre-K a little bit. I don't think any things have settled on that. But generally, you know, so both student populations will be going to buildings that have extensive work or will be a new building. But, so we'll be going to two elementary schools, and then we will be closing Town Campus Learning Center, which is the pre-K building on this site. So that'll be shut. So we are condensing the footprint down. So, and then the other referendum project, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, we're going to be having a lot more conversations about this academy. Just to remind people, the board had discussed this a few weeks ago with the academy committee. You know, we approved a bonding $15.9 million for renovations, and we were very fortunate to get additional state federal grant for that project. So we've now received $7.6 million in grants that covers 48% of the approved project budget of referendum, which is a phenomenal amount of money and far surpasses, I think, what anybody expected we'd be having, getting from grants for this project. The academy committee has been working very hard on. This is a very challenging project because of the age of the building. And they've gone through and done a deep dive into all the mechanical, electrical plumbing and kind of infrastructure issues. And the reality is that what came out of that, and they kind of told us that at our last meeting, is that the budget is much higher, the needs are much higher than was originally anticipated in the building. So more of that $15.9 million has to go towards kind of infrastructure than was originally thought, which leaves less for some of the build-out of the spaces for community use, for the offices, for improvements to the building outside of infrastructure. And then they've also been dealing with the, you know, inflation that we've been seeing. As we saw the new school project, we're seeing it pretty much every project that we're dealing with right now. Anything that was costed out prior to 2022 has been hammered with this inflationary environment for construction, and that has not gone down. It's not the same as CPI. It's not the same as the price of eggs at the grocery store. Just want to remind people, it's very different. And there continues to be a very high inflation in the construction market. So, so the academy committee is going to be working on this. In the process, and they're almost done with a modified scope design plan if they're going to stick to the budget. Because we can't spend more than $15.9 million on this project without getting voter approval. Now, we've been successful with grants. So the board will then decide we want to go out and get voter approval to spend the grant money on the cost overruns, right? Can we, you know, we need $2 or $3 million more. Can we take that grant money and put it towards that versus putting it towards the bonding? But that would require voter approval. So, right now, what do we get for $15.9 million? And then the other thing they're working on is really saying, what do we have to, what budget do we need in order to deliver what people expect when they vote for a project? So we have a special meeting scheduled for April 3rd. I just wanted to highlight to the public, there's no big decisions being made. There's no votes being taken. No referendum date has been set. There's a lot of people talking about a referendum. No, we haven't decided if we're going to do that, and then we have to know what the timeline is and what we'd be asking. And so this is a first of probably a couple of meetings with the committee to kind of work through priorities and figure out what those choices are. So they'll be coming to us on the 3rd, and then we'll talk probably about timeline, too, if we did think we needed to go to a referendum, like, how long would that take and what would it look like? But I just want to set expectations, and the committee is working very hard, and they'll be coming back with some of the things that they've kind of come to, especially on the budget as-is. Like, where are you going to get for that? Are you going to get the gym renovated or the theater renovated? Are you going to get, you know, the new subject or not? So they're just going to have to walk through and say, for $15.9, this is what you get, and here are the choices you're going to have to make. So that's probably what that meeting is going to be about. I know they're meeting tomorrow, another meeting again, or they met last week. So they've been working on all this. And then our board had the opportunity individually to tour the building, so I think there was some good takeaways from that, that we, you know, understand that we really need to kind of do some priority setting for the project now to really make sure that it aligns with what we all supported when we voted to move this to referendum in 2022. So, so I just thought it was important to highlight this again. But this will be a continuing conversation, and there's no big decisions being made in the next week or two, for sure. So, and there'll be plenty of opportunity for the public to weigh in, and any of this stuff will be going to public discussion and getting public feedback. So, so with that, that is my update, and I guess I will put it up to any other selectman comments or liaison reports.
I have a few.
I have a few as well. You go first.
Okay. So from senior commission, just a little update on the senior center renovation project. It sounds like everything is going smoothly down there, and we're anticipating a mid-May completion date for that project. From planning and zoning, that group has been working on the plan of conservation and development, and they are finalizing their draft. They have sent that to us for some comments, so make sure you check your email box. And they're aiming for a June public hearing on the POCD. And then lastly, the Affordable Housing Group. So they just hosted another really great coffee and conversation this past week. It was very well-attended. We packed this room and even had to bring in some extra chairs, so really great participation there. And they have two more events that they are planning. So if folks have not had a chance to attend the first two, they're looking to schedule an all Zoom meeting in April and then another in-person meeting in May. And so the dates and times on those have not yet been determined, but we'll make sure to share them far and wide once they happen.
Great. It's great to see you on the first.
Yeah, really. Is that it?
Good tip.
All right, that was quick. Mine may be slightly longer, sorry. So Board of Ed, last meeting was March 19th. And just to give a quick update, they received an excellent report from Madison Youth and Family Services on the student survey or discuss ways that they are supporting students' social and emotional health, as well as ways that we, what we can improve on. Drug and alcohol use was discussed as well, obviously an important topic. Looking for admin to follow up with Madison Youth and Family Services. Also, there's concern over the budget reduction of $240,000. Superintendent shared that his meeting with his admin team, it was on March 20th, to then start discussing what they need to do. Board of Finance Committee is then meeting on April 2nd to discuss, and will likely be on the next agenda, which is on April 2nd. So that's Board of Ed. And the library just wanted me to, let me find it here. Just wanted to let you guys know that they're working currently on their strategic plan. They're contacting and reaching out to many businesses, focus groups. The plan is coming together, looking at, believe, for end dates somewhere in the May timeframe to have that done. So obviously, we'll see that, participate in that, and get to react. And then Madison Youth and Family, I had an opportunity on, it was mid-last week, to attend a session on drug trends that was hosted by Catherine Barton, and she had a guest speaker in there. I'm telling you guys, if you get a chance to go to one of these sessions, it was outstanding. It was really good. I learned a ton. I didn't know what a board was, which is blackout drinking. Did you know that? Did you know that was a thing? There are creative packages. She showed commercials that are out there on TikTok and how the kids are being marketed directly to. There is real drugs out there called cocaine powder. Did you know that that existed? There are pills laced with fentanyl out there. So there are so many different, like, strange things that I didn't even know existed. And I think the public was super well-attended. It was, I think it was packed house. It was like 30 people in the room. Fantastic. And then we learned a little bit more about specifically opioids, the opioid addiction problems that are going on, some of the triggers, and then how to actually administer Narcan. And they had some samples of Narcan. I could not take one, but they were giving them out, I know, to different organizations in town. So it was, it was very, very impressive, so.
Are they, was it recorded?
No, it was not.
Are they going to do it again, you think?
I'm going to get all the materials. There's two presentations that they did, and I'll make sure that I get it to you guys, and then we can even post them. I know it's probably
I would have liked to have gone to that.
It is really good.
Kids that are in or pushing high school, it's always a good thing to keep yourself up to speed on what's out there.
Absolutely. Absolutely. One more, one more update if you'll let me. So obviously, so I attended the training, and then Scott Cochran, the board chair, Dave Buller suggested that maybe we talk a little bit about, too, that they just had an enrichment event with the Madison Youth and Family Board of Directors, which was very well-attended. It's where the staff comes in and sort of trains the board a little bit on skills and capabilities and things that are going on to enhance the connection and common purpose between the board and the work of Madison Youth and Family Services. The event included several team-building exercises that were very successful. And then, obviously, on a more serious note, if they wanted me to share that they've been able to recently keep up with the demand of the mental health services. But this month, they had to reinstitute a waiting list for child and adolescent therapy. This is partly due to the ongoing demand and staffing transition. So just a lot going on in the organization. So hopefully, that is helpful. I know it was long, but it is what it is.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just have a comment. I got the press release today from the governor's office about the rollout of the on-demand local transportation.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Madison is slated for the end of May, the transit district.
Is this the dollar 75?
It's the buck 75, yeah. So it's rolling out, I think it's some of the more urban areas over the next week or two, but by the time it rolls out to us, it'll be the end of May, and that'll be on-demand transportation around the shoreline. There are promises they'll be there, you know, in around 20 minutes.
But it's just Madison to Guilford, right? Between Madison and for us, right? It's not like, we're not taking people to Stanford.
But I think it will also interface with other hubs. So there will be designated spots where there's going to be some overlap to be able to go from district to district, I suspect, if I read the press release correctly.
About our program, but it could be a possibility. On that note, though, I think I'm going to have them come in April to present what the program's going to be, because they're still kind of formulating and
So one thing, I mean, I tried to dig down into it, you know, like a user might, and it was hard to get to the app.
Yeah.
So they're, they talk about, use the app, use the app, use the app. You have to be really diligent about trying to find the app, and so
You can't just get it from the App Store, because I've been where they just said you just type in
So I think that each district has its own app.
Really?
And
Well, River Valley Transit is operating ours, so we would be using their app. Right? And then there is a CT rides that interfaces between the two.
You can get to the app eventually, but my, I guess my comment would be
Right. You could find it easy, so.
That should be front and center. Here's the app to take you to the ride.
Click here, boom.
Well, they will, they've hired a marketing firm, too, and there's going to be a lot of promotion and information that comes out. But you just reminded me that that is slated. I'll try to put that on in probably the end of April agenda, you know, just prior to that. So we can time on us, and so we can kind of educate everybody what it is. Okay.
I'm speechless.
Okay. Well, actually, one other thing
I would have shared some of mine with you.
Yeah.
I mean, I know we've been just commenting about early voting, because that is starting tomorrow here in Town Hall. I know that they've put out a lot of information about it, the hours, a lot's on the website. But just want to highlight again, this is for the Connecticut presidential primary. So there's no other voting going on. This is an academy or the governor's race with the presidential. But it's the presidential primary, and it's kind of a test run for early voting. So, but you can go to the website if you want to early vote in either Republican or Democratic primary. You have to be registered voter in those parties. And you can get the information that you need, how to do that, and what the hours are going to be, but it's going to be in this room. So, multi-purpose thing, so.
It's two weeks in this room, right?
No, this one is only, this is only a five-day, I think, primary, early voting, but the one in November will be 15 days. So, for that one. Okay, great. If there's no other comments, do we have any citizens' comments? We just have staff here, which they'll be talking soon. Any hands raised, Jeannie?
No hands are raised.
Okay, one more chance. If you're on and want to make a comment, and there's an opportunity at the end of the meeting to make a comment. Okay, with that, I'll move on to item number six is I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second, any further comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Item number seven is an update from the new school, new elementary school building committee, which I wonder if we can school.
Oh, yeah.
But, and like to invite up the chair, Jeannie, you've got Graham here, and then I know Adam from Colliers is probably joining us as well. And so I think maybe just a two-second kind of where you are, and we're excited to keep moving these things forward in terms of, you know, start to hire people and spend money, unfortunately. It's a good thing, because the school gets that.
And you have a name.
Yes, and you have a name, so. All right, welcome.
Welcome. It's great. It's great to be back again tonight. If you're remote, recall, a couple of weeks ago, we were here requesting, you know, the award of the early packages to get the site contractor started, site contractor, et cetera, started. And if anybody's driven down Munger Town, you know, they actually are in construction, the security fence, so on and so forth, is up. So tonight, we're here to request the award of the additional contracts to complete the project to the GMP. The CM has gone through due diligence. The architect, Colliers, has reviewed the bids. We feel very comfortable with the bids. And so we're ready to move forward. The best news is that we, as of now, we are under budget, and as Peggy mentioned, we're on the original schedule, which was fairly aggressive schedule, but with a lot of help from a great team and a lot of support from the town staff, we've gotten to this point. So I don't know, maybe Adam, if you want to provide, maybe, I think you have a schedule or something, you want to show more detail?
Yeah, I can, I have the ability to screen share. I will. So just in terms of the, we call it the macro-level schedule, where it kind of outlines the entire project from the beginnings in 2022 through the end of construction. Right now, we're right here at this red line in 2024. As you can see, we've had about a month's worth of construction activities with just some of the pre-work. And as this board recalls, we had a couple of early authorizations, both for procurement a couple of months ago, as well as some early trade release packages, which is part of the work you're seeing going on on-site right now. So, as Graham mentioned, right on schedule, and the key discussion for tonight is the the GMP Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to Gilbain's contract, where not only do you confirm the money for the initial base scope, but you also reconfirm the schedule now that everything's gone through design. And working with both Gilbain and with Tekton, the architect, the May 31 substantial completion date, as it's known in the construction contract, is still the target for when Gilbain says that they'll have the base scope done. Substantial completion does not mean building open, students inside. What it means is that that's when the building is ready to initially serve as a school. So the town staff, et cetera, can start going in there. From a construction standpoint, that's when we would start to schedule our furniture deliveries and some of that last cleanup work. But basically, the intent is that by the start of summer 2025, Gilbain will be, again, substantially complete with their work. The building would turn over to the town, and then Gilbain would finish up their punch list items and do some of the remaining site work while furniture and some of those last mile items are installed over the summer in time for school opening for the 2025, 2026 school year. So all good news on the schedule front. And as Graham had mentioned earlier, also good on the budgetary front. As I mentioned at the school building committee on Thursday last week, the GMP is coming in right at about $48 million. That is compared with the current budget of just over $52 million. However, if you recall, there were some added funds to get to that $52 million mark. So if you compare it to the original budget of $46 million, $46.6 million, the point being is that there's still a lot of good work that was done by the school building committee, the board of education, the project team to do the necessary value engineering and alternates and all that fiscal responsibility measures to make sure that the project could be viable. So we're happy that where we're at in terms of budget versus Gilbain's construction amendment. And that's the key goal for tonight, is to confirm this, it's a large sum of money. So I want to make sure that Board of Selectmen is in agreement with the school building committee's approval of the GMP and the three alternates that they voted on as past Thursday.
And I know that we, as a board, had already conveyed to the building committee that, obviously, we need to be as diligent as possible to make sure that there's any opportunity to return funds to the overall project budget. You know, we want to do that. And so we're in a good spot right now. I think the alternates they approved were just very focused and necessary at this stage. There's going to be additional decision-making opportunities throughout the project, but I think they understand that there is a goal here to save as much as possible throughout this entire process. So
Absolutely. The building committee is 100% united on that front.
Great. Awesome. Do you mind shoving that door just because people are going up? And just excited, you know, that we're in a good space on this. And, you know, every day that we go forward, the more things become known, right? And the unknowns get less, right? So we also have a lot of contingency built into this. So, you know, we might end up being in a very good place with this overall. So, but we're excited. A question I have, just on timeline, you know, is there like a flex, you know, you have a delay for, because, you know, you're going to be going through the winter, weather hurricanes, you know, you don't know. I think about weather-related issues that can impact the project and cause a significant delay. Is there buffer built into that, like, you know, for the timeline? Yeah, and then, you know, I don't know, is the board of ed like thinking about, you know, they might start school a couple of weeks late in September if there's a problem? I'm just trying to think through the timeline contingencies now for unforeseen, you know, acts of God, so.
Yeah, so there's a number of ways that the project can handle something that measure, that nature. Some things that come up, so a typical one that, especially in the Northeast, is sort of your, what's called run-of-the-mill nor'easters and weather delays that might throw off Gilbain's schedule. That is handled differently through things like CM contingency and things of that nature versus, like you were saying, like a true act of God, if there was, you know, two weeks of straight torrential rains and nothing could happen on the site, well, that's a different negotiation about what we do with schedule. And each potential schedule impact comes with an effort on how to resolve it without changing contract time or money. So can things be rescheduled? If not, what are the options that are available? I can tell you, coming off of a Mansfield project that had the misfortune of dealing with the brunt of all the COVID-related delays and, you know, no fault of anyone's, just, you know, key components were unavailable, things of that nature. There's a constant dialogue about how any schedule impacts get addressed by the town and the board of education. So two weeks is a much different story than three months. And so if it's looking like there are substantive delays, that immediately gets communicated with Dr. Cook and the Board of Education and seeing where we're at in terms of flexibility. Heaven forbid the worst shoe to come, and we need to and, and seeing where, where we're at in terms of flexibility, heaven forbid the worst should come and we need to, to, to significantly push up the schedule. But things like starting schools late by a week or two or things like that nature, those are all in the toolbox to address the items as they come up. So, uh, right now, you know, Gilbane has their schedule, that's, you know, it's a consistent march all the way through all the, all the items. But, um, just because there's a, you know, a delay and, and one component of it doesn't mean that necessarily delay the entire project. We go through the process of identifying, can we resequence, can we reschedule, can we expedite the work, you know, weekend time, things of that nature, um, to, to mitigate any schedules, because, you know, although there's, there's always a, a, you know, trade-off between money and schedule. Um, the contingency funds are, are there to help address some of those problems, but you can never get a day back once a day is gone necessarily, you know, without trying to speed up the work. So that's the, the dance, so to speak, that, that, uh, Colliers and Tekton and Gilbane worked through and, and ultimately put those options in front of the school building committee to make, you know, the best informed decision for now.
Okay, and any questions from board members?
No.
Yeah.
I love hearing under budget, non-schedule.
So do I.
I bet.
Uh, okay, well, good, then I think, uh, we're ready to move on to item number eight then, which is kind of a big nut, but it's one that's been expected and I know the building committee has been, and working closely with Colliers to get this nailed down to as detailed as possible. So, uh, item number eight is discuss and take action to accept the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to Gilbane's contract dated three twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, including recommendations to award approved alternates from the new elementary school building committee to authorize Gilbane Company to enter to contracts with trade subcontract identified therein and proceed with construction for those school items and to authorize the first select one to sign all necessary associated contracts and documents associated with this.
So moved.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, got that done. Um, actually, this is not the big part, but, um, e- every time we're voting on stuff. All right, well, great, uh, uh, good luck. We will, um, continue to probably have you come back and update us, um, and, you know, appreciate all the hard work and diligence and, um, look forward to seeing this come to life finally, so.
Well, we'll be at the ribbon cutting or whatever it is, coming up soon.
Yep, we will, for the start of the, of the project.
The golden shovel.
Yeah, there will be that, and I'll just, so if the public is watching, there'll be opportunities for the public to participate in things later. This is just kind of a ceremonial thing that we, they usually do as a kickoff for the project, but there'll be other opportunities for people to visit on site and to, um, participate. Uh, all right, great, well, thank you guys. Um, so next item on the agenda is, um, item number nine. I know Chief Drum is probably here, discuss and take action to award a contract to Utility Communications for the installation. Actually, I'm going to amend the motion on here that's written on the agenda and add the dollar amount. Um, does that make sense? Because we've got the number of the actual dollar amount. So, um, discuss and take action to award a contract to Utility Communications, Inc. for the installation of security cameras for the Madison Police Department in an amount of seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents funded through ARPA and authorizing the first select one to sign all contract and documents associated with this. So moved. Okay, so this is, uh, we had a purpose in a previous meeting, Jack is here, this is the, um, technology that would be used to catch, uh, vehicles. It basically reads license plates when cars come off the highway to see if there's stolen vehicles and provides alerts to our police department. Um, this would, and it's just a great way to create additional, um. Oh, Jack, are you, uh, you know what?
I don't know, can you hear me, folks?
Uh, no, I gotta, I gotta show non-video participants there.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you, Jack.
We can hear you, but we can't see anything. That's weird.
Wait, hold on. Okay, you can hear me though, right?
We can hear you, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, go ahead.
Okay, hi, good evening, everybody. Um, this is the, uh, RFP we put out for the camera project, uh, to enhance us in the, uh, actually, uh, an enhancement to patrol for the combating some of the crime that's affecting our community as well as our neighbors. Uh, this was the, um, uh, the camera project, we had, uh, four companies that had, uh, we submitted for, uh, RFP. Uh, we chose the utility communication was paramount in this, is that one is the, uh, made in America record cameras. Second, that it's a cam, the Connecticut-based company that will do the servicing. And most importantly, um, it's the system that's used by, uh, neighboring cities, which is paramount in getting information very quickly to us in regards to, um, vehicles, stall and other crimes coming, that may be coming into our neighborhoods, our, our community. Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um, a question I noticed, you did have a list of the locations, um, and it, it seemed focused, I guess, more on hu- highway on-ramps and stuff than more, you know, in the southern part of the town. Is there in any plans to add anything more up in the northern part of town or is this just more focused on where you think that, you know, it's going to be most effective?
I think a larger, uh, we'd like to have them all along the Route seventy-nine, eighty corridor up to the Durham line. Well, certainly at the circle that, uh, seventy-nine and, uh, Route eighty. Um, additionally, out Route eighty, um, going towards the cities, uh, uh, that are west of us.
Okay.
But that's, that's future installations, Jack? That's not the current ones?
The current one's going to hit where the highway, um, most certainly where the, uh, the ramps that dump, or that exit onto Route one area south of Route one, because that's where we had a, a spike in a lot of the, uh, the activity we have with auto theft and other crimes. But, uh, we are looking to put one at, most certainly at the circle, the one further north, um, uh, in the area of Dorset.
Uh, so did this budget want to count for that or is that like a future plan? Because I thought that listing was more down south, south of, uh?
The, the initial installation will pay for the cameras south of I ninety-five. If you recall, I did make, ask for an additional budget request for next year for additional cameras.
Um, and, and then, um, I know there had been some concerns by members of the public that, you know, qualifications for ARPA funds. Uh, maybe Stacy can talk to that. There's no issue with this vendor or with using this money, ARPA funds to purchase the equipment, correct, Stacy?
Correct, yes. We, um, confirmed that we can use the ARPA funds and we followed the correct procurement policy.
Okay, good. Any other questions for Jack and us? No?
Yep.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so.
Thank you.
Next item, and you can see on, Jack.
I'm here.
Discuss and take action to approve a request from the police department to move sixty thousand dollars in the communications from, from this year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five to this year twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for a needs assessment study for communication towers pending Board of Finance approval. Um.
So moved.
Second, okay, great. So, and I know we have Sam here, and we talked about this a few meetings ago about trying to figure out what we're going to do that we're losing a communications tower. So they have a little bit of an update for that, but then this is also a broader study of problems that we know exist in town with reception, right?
Yeah.
Um, and including for town purposes, but also for resident purposes, so, um, so I don't know if you want to give an update on, uh, Sam or Jack about the tower?
Should I, should we start off with what it is we're seeking, Sam?
Yeah, for the, uh, the RFP.
Okay, um, all right, the RFP, um, well, first of all, we're looking at, um, it's twofold. We're looking to, uh, for land mobile radio analysis and needs assessment for not only communications within the town, for future tower sites enhancement to existing tower sites. Um, also, uh, cell mobile communication enhancements, as an example, um, as we go north towards Rockland Reserve, as we go south, south of Route one by the Surf Club. If we're going to be looking at perhaps future towers that we ask that the utilities maybe join on and, and enhance the, uh, coverage that seems to be avoided in, particularly in the beach areas of the town, most certainly most, uh, northern part of town. So, uh, one, it's understanding the value of public safety, communication system and its equipment, and second is a land mobile radio, uh, and the CAD system analysis for us. There's been approximately half a dozen towns that have done such studies prior to spending dime one on construction, um, in, in, in this area. Some of those that'll last thirty-six months, West Hartford, Windsor, Windsor Locks, Westport, Fairfield, and, uh, I believe East Windsor.
Okay, so, um, and then this was money that we had in CIP for communications.
That is, that is correct.
Right, and then it was basically not going to be available to July first, but we kind of want to get this rolling because, you know, we've been kind of struggling on the communication issues with that tower, and we just would like to get this guy going rather than waiting another, yeah, due to the RFP, so we're ready to go. So it's just moving forward money that's already there.
Yeah, the, the, the question came up, what started most of this is that we, we knew that we had issues south of Route one, we knew we had issues in the area of Rockland Reserve, Dorset Lane, so we're seeking to enhance the two radio towers there. Subsequently, subsequent to that, we knew that, um, we know now that we're, there's a change to the Route seventy-nine old tower, which is very important for the, um, particularly Route one corridor for all the services, police, fire, ambulance. And we know now, and Sam can elaborate on this, that, um, there is a second tower being built, um, by the vendors that they assured us that we would be on that tower, that's in the area of, uh, Hunter's Trail alongside of I ninety-five. So, uh, the, 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 um, concern of timing, I, I guess it's not a concern now, but we did learn during this process from many of the vendors that some of the opportunity that where the town could go, we're, um, down the road is that if we build towers to, um, fix the areas or give coverage that we need, ninety-eight percent for the emergency services, that perhaps at that point, maybe the vendors would join in and we could end up ha- having an enhancement to the communication. By then, I mean, mobile and cell and data for homeowners within the town.
Yeah, I, I think this is, um, came out as a plan that a lot of them saw about, um, you know, cell coverage. Obviously, our public safety needs and priority was making sure we have someplace to go and this tower against the commission. We're pretty good shape for that, but then we know, we know we still have gaps and then the community has gaps, so this will help map that out. We talked about, you know, trying to improve the Surf Club, looking at sites up in North Madison, schools up, you know, with Brown is, is issue. So, um, this study will help review all that and look at options and, you know, is the town going to want to put up its own tower? Does the town want to, you know, partner with somebody? Um, so just looking at all those things and helping us map out a strategy.
Will, will this, uh, will this fix, Jack or Sam, um, will this fix the, sort of the notorious dead zone on seventy-nine eventually that everybody hates?
Well, we hope to, we hope to fix the dead spot at Brown School, the dead spots around Surf Club, um, you know, then upwards above County Road. Uh, you know, that's why we want to get a comprehensive plan, figure out where the best spot is to start putting the towers up. The best thing is if we get these vendor, you know, the carriers that come in, is if they're interested in on the site, power company will build it for us. Uh, we didn't get, we showed them the site at the Public Works for Ours, but I guess the carriers like, you know, the site better because it is about thirty feet higher in elevation. You know, they only have to put a hundred fifty-foot tower versus a hundred eighty-foot tower. Um, so that's why we, we kind of lost out at that, but we did, you know, get word to let us go on it. We don't know if we have to pay yet, but we're hoping that they'll let us go on it for, for free. Uh, but there probably will be some costs, either moving equipment or buying, because problem is moving now, you have to have site up and running before you, you take your site down. Um, and then, you know, that, you know, that whole negotiation thing fell apart a few months ago with that and the property, but, um, who knows, if you have a tower, you might turn around and say, hey, listen, I'll take a deal, they won't have to do anything.
Perhaps not.
Yeah, yeah, because there are other options now, so.
But the, but the, uh, the important thing is they have to have, they're going to move quick on it because they have to have the tower built and up and running by May first of twenty twenty-five. So if there's nothing happens with, they go Route seventy-nine, well, you know, they, they have to secure spot for their carriers.
So they're under pressure for the timeline, but then I'm assuming we're also under pressure because we want the dead zones filled, so.
Right.
If I could add?
Go.
Oh, uh, there's been so much information. Sam and I, we spent a couple of days walking with these people, different sites and the people represent the industry. And it was a lot of information thrown at us, but there's a lot of possibilities for the town down the road. And to maximize whatever dime we spent or dollar we spent on enhancing radio or other communications in the town. So that's what drove us to sit there in, in, in most of our most meetings we have with, uh, with the first select one. We said, you know, maybe it's time to do a, some sort of a study to see what is available out there, get us a better understanding of it before we spend any, uh, hard, hard dollars on this.
Yeah, figuring out, you know, what are the options available? You know, because it is kind of circular, right? So some of it will impact what happens with this, because there's still these other problems we have to solve. So I think it will well worth the time to, to do this.
And these, uh, I think the towers are going to be out for a while because we just got solicited the, the, the other day from Symphony. They, uh, they go around, they buy up the leases, they manage the towers. So they want to buy all the rights for the leases and kind of manage it themselves and either pay us outright or give us a share of, I don't, I don't, you know, we're probably going to take a fifty percent reduction, so I don't know why we want to do that.
And, and if we were to develop sites down the road, I mean, I, I, I know I'm probably a little more anxious on this than some others that, I mean, I look at what the value, what we brought in. Um, approximately two hundred thousand plus annually for each tower site, uh, that, that's, that could fund emergency services down the road for many years. Um, I, I, I think that we, you know, there's so much going on in the communications now and the, and the, the, the trend and the, and technology updates uh, we're facing in town right now, you know, our premise file or, or that we use within our CAD system for all the services. And that needs a tremendous update and hav- having sat down with these folks and, and walked the sites with them, Sam and I learned a lot about this that, you know, we have to, um, somehow get out there and start bringing us the next, um, level of what we expect in emergency service response and equipment that they have to, uh, accomplish that task.
Any more, any more questions?
Well, thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I guess with that, the all in favor of approving item number ten, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Um, all right, well, great, thank, thanks a lot, Jack and Sam.
Thank you very much, folks.
That's having a lot of conversations about towers, so it would be good to get somebody who just really mapped this out first. Uh, item number eleven, I appreciate your patience, Austin, um, is an, uh, update from the Beach and Recreation Department for the summer season. You know, the last couple of years, um, Beach and Rec comes in and kind of talks about where we are with the summer season and staffing. So Jeannie's got your presentation up.
All right. So, um, thank you for having me, and we'll talk about, uh, our upcoming Beach Pass season, which is, uh, quickly approaching.
What color are we going to be?
Uh, so it's like a, uh, a medium, medium-shaped bluish color. Uh, so we can go to the next slide, Jeannie, please. So same as last year, uh, no changes in pricing or ages. Uh, so resident adult beach parking passes, um, are forty dollars for the first car, twenty for the second. And that's for ages sixty-four and under. Resident senior beach parking passes are ten dollars per car, that's age sixty-five and up. And last year, we, we made that change to sixty-five and up, so if in the past you were able to purchase a senior beach pass, you'll still be able to do that. We did that, same as last year too. Um, a resident veteran beach parking pass of any age is ten dollars for the first car and twenty dollars for the second car. And a resident guest day beach parking pass, so you're buying as a resident, you're buying a pass for a guest of yours that's ten dollars per car. And, uh, on Monday, so a week from today, the passes will go on sale, um, at the Surf Club in person. You'll be able to do them online. Um, so, you know, two different options for you, or you can mail in the form and we'll send it out to you by, in the mail as well. So if you go to madisonct.org slash slash beach stickers, you'll be able to access the form to fill out. Uh, or if you go onto our, our website, which is madisonct.org slash rec- recreation, that'll walk you through to where you could find, um, the Beach Pass registration form, and if you've purchased one in the past, you can renew. We'll get that list in the morning. We register that into our system and we'll put the passes into the. We register that into our system, and we'll put the passes into the postal service within a couple of days. And you'll get it usually within a week.
Curious, is it okay to ask? Mix of online purchases versus mail?
So typically.
Or in person, I guess.
So typically, the first few weeks, it's all mostly in person, people are, people have been coming to the Surf Club looking to buy them for the past couple of months. Yeah, so there'll be, uh, there'll be, you know, people continuously coming in over the next couple of weeks, and that slows down a little bit. And then more online sales will take place, um, but we sell passes right up to Labor Day, there's people that buy them just for the day. So in terms of when you need your, your beach parking pass, they'll be required on weekends, beginning Saturday, May twenty-fifth. Um, so at all of our beaches on the weekends, starting May twenty-fifth. And then beginning on Saturday, June fifteenth, you'll be required to have a beach parking pass seven days a week. At all the town beaches, we do that after school gets out. Because we can't really staff the gates and have the right amount of people till we get the high school kids involved.
And, and I just wanna emphasize again, because it could be a beautiful day in May. And everybody goes to the beach, right, and includes ham and asket, you know, packs, and I've seen it many times, right, it'll be like May fifteenth or May tenth. We do not have staffing for that, because our staffing is usually seasonal type people that are, you know, either in high school or cop- mostly college students, so. Which is why we have to start this, the, uh, seven day week staffing June fifteenth, so I get. I see the kind of frenzy, why is not the staff, you know, who, yeah, so just understand that a lot of the staffing that we have. Is oriented towards the fact that we hire college kids, and, um. And so that's another reason why we only have it on the weekends, Memorial Day, it's Memorial Day also, though, so it's, it's the holiday.
Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Yeah, Saturday, Sunday, Monday for that weekend, you'll need a beach, uh, sticker, but then it'll be only the next weekend until June fifteen, that'll be seven days a week.
Don't worry, it's only raining.
You looked it up in the online.
Austin, what's the thinking regarding guarding West Wharf Gate different hours than the other two?
So we've done that the past two or three years, um, so that's our smallest parking area. And if we leave at five o'clock, like we do Easton Surf Club. Um, the parking lot fills up immediately, and then if you're still wanting to go to the beach, you probably aren't gonna get a parking spot. Uh, and we've had, you know, no adverse complaints about doing that. We've actually had people thanking us that we're, we're guarding till eight, so they can come in with a pass and watch the sunset. Uh, or park and, and just sit on the beach or walk their dog.
Well, because we're, you got the dinner hour at the hotel, right, so I know that, and the, a hotel has been great, I mean, they will valet park you, but a lot of people. I'm a resident that does the same thing, I go to the hotel, I usually park in West Wharf, right, and then walk up to the hotel, uh, but, you know. So it helps mitigate some of that as well.
And then we'll have lifeguards on duty beginning weekends, so Memorial Day weekend, and then seven days a week after June nineteenth. So, weekends, starting Memorial Day weekend, including the Monday of Memorial Day, and then seven days a week following, uh, June nineteenth. Uh, and then, as Al said, we guard Surf Club East Wharf gates from eight AM to five PM, and West Wharf from eight AM to eight PM. And in case you didn't know, Memorial Day weekend this year is May twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. And then as we move on, we'll talk about the July fourth, uh, weekend.
Just before you do that, yeah, just more continuity, but has Beach and Rec, um, as a committee or commission, whatever we call them. Have they talked at all about, I know it's an annual thing, but have they talked at all about increasing the, the beach pass price at all?
No.
Is there rationale for why not, or?
Uh, it's been that price for, for some time now.
Yeah, that was my point.
Um, that's something we could, we could discuss if that's the route that we, we wanna take as a town.
I have an open thought.
I bet you you do.
The novel idea that if you pay a property tax on a vehicle in Madison, maybe the receipt, receipt should come with a parking pass.
I know, we, so, you recall, we had a big discussion about this back in twenty twenty, right? I think, and looking at all this, and, um, and the plan was, because. The previous summer had been so disruptive, we were like, let's table it, and then we got through COVID, we said we don't wanna disrupt anything. I think we are due to look at all this stuff again this year, um, you know, it's not gonna go into effect now, obviously, we're selling stuff soon, but. Um, I think that as a board, there, and this is part of you joining. If you really look at how the fees work, fee structure, some of it doesn't really make sense, you know, and, um. I think we did, we, we talked about different ideas, you know, just handing passes to any property owner. Um, changing the fee structure, incentivizing different behavior with the. Because right now, you, you really kinda make it so easy to add extra cars, and, you know, families end up bringing four cars, we just can't get four carers. So, because it's so inexpensive to get that extra vehicle sticker, right, so. So we talked about that, we talked about the senior price, you know, it was an extensive conversation, um. And I think, you know, and Bruce had talked a lot about, do we just get rid of the, um, you know. It's, you, you, you take the hit of however much money we bring in for revenue of this and just ha- put it as part of your tax bill or whatever, um.
Or do you add as a fee to your tax bill, I mean, sometimes. Yeah, a lot of it just there, plus ten dollars, and then you get a, so there's ways to, you'll get the rep.
So I think it's worth doing this, like, and maybe we start in May or June, going through that. Exercise and looking at the options, I did talk to some towns that have taken your approach. Uh, I remember back then when we were looking at all this, there are a few that have done that, because the other thing that, um, I know. Some places, we might wanna start having a town sticker, you know, to use like the, they would love, Guilford would love it if we had a sticker showing the Madison residents. So you can drive in to use the transfer station, you can drive in to use the stump dump, you know, so there's some benefits to having. So, you know, there's some things where you could roll all that into it, and, um, and, you know, uh, there's a lot of things to explore, I think, um. And then obviously, I know you have a kind of a new commission too, so they haven't really been through. I know there's also resistance, you don't wanna make this an extra cost for people to spend a lot of money. So it's trying to get the, you know, but it, it does help creep, you know, it helps mitigate volume a little bit, if there is, you know, a, a price you have to pay for the sticker. So I think it's worth maybe taking out as a board, looking at that, or would we rather have the commission look at all, come back with recommendations? I guess is the question, um, do you want them to kind of come back with ideas and have this be a project for them? Or would you rather us, we've talked a lot about this, so, and it's strong views.
We can, we can talk about policy direction, certainly, I would hate to waste the commission's time on a lot of policy that we know we're not gonna accept.
Right.
The other voice that I'd be interested in hearing is John Seneris, because I know he gets a lot of. He gets a lot of potential customers or frustrated customers that wanna come just for lunch, or, or, you know, an afternoon thing. And I'm not talking about out of town people, they're, you know, they're on their own, um, but there might be.
That's typically who it is, though. That wanna come in and just go to lunch there, because if, if you, you'll, you'll have the pass if you're a resident to get in.
Not necessarily, we, I mean, how many cars are registered in Madison, and how many stickers do we sell?
A lot, but I don't know if it's an exact.
I, I, I would say that it's a relatively small portion of the number of cars that are, that are actually in town. The other thing is, we all pay for the facility, um, if we can make it easier for people to use. I hear, I hear that we're all unanimously agreeing that, that we should. That we should give beach passes to everybody.
Well, but I think that there's this balancing act of volume control, right, we've learned that. The reality is, we don't ever fill up except a few gorgeous saddles and then July four weekend, right? And last year, I don't think we ever closed Surf Club.
Maybe once for an hour.
Yeah, uh, so we're not, it's not, you know, you go there on a Wednesday, it's pretty quiet, you know, during July, it's not a problem during the week, so. You know, maybe some of this is looking at different kinds of policies like that too, to try to like balance it out, but, you know. Um, because it's really our peak volume, our, our policy is really driven towards trying to keep that peak volume down, right, um, so we're, but it's only a couple of days, yeah.
How many parking spaces do you have? And how many passes do you sell?
Thousands.
Thousands, so we're already well into the multiples of parking, so I, I don't think adding more changes, that, I think. I think you got that in one or two days.
Yeah.
That you're talking about still, it's really about increasing access. But anyways, maybe, maybe the, the takeaway for us today is that this is a topic. That we pick up before the budget season starts.
Yes, I, I, I would say that, and also try to, um, use the summer season as a, you know, gauging.
Data collection kind of a thing, yeah.
Yeah, and we have a lot of data. Yeah, he's been tracking tick marks of the gate on everything, different types of passes, and I, I do wanna emphasize for the public. This isn't about revenue, i- if anything, it's, it's actually keeping the volume to manageable levels. And access for, for our residents, so I think that's what we're, we need to kind of balance out.
But does it all also help offset some of the costs of like, the, you know?
It's part of the calculus, but the money doesn't go back into it, goes into the general fund. It's part of the calculus that Portofinance uses. When they, when they do things, because it's revenue and they answer to revenue. But no, this doesn't go back to Austin's budget, this goes to the general fund.
It should go back to Austin.
And then last summer and this summer are gonna be more typical summers, you know, because folks are kind of back to traveling, right?
Yeah.
You know, as opposed to the COVID summers where things were just busting at the seams, it felt like some days, so, you know, last summer's data, the summer's data.
That'd be good, good to have all that. I mean, what's amazing, though, is our camps are, like, they're sold out like within a day now, right, I heard that.
Hours.
Pardon? Has that really ever happened before, like, I don't recall it being like that.
Very popular and. Again, it's, it's an inexpensive childcare for the summer, it's at the beach, you get to go swimming, and you're, you're at the Surf Club. Take these great trips that we go on, um, yeah, within, it was like eight minutes, it was sold out.
You're the camp, are you the camp director?
I'm not the camp director.
Well, starting to hijack, we went sort of down rabbit hole, but I think it is important.
So, um, so July fourth weekend again is our, our busiest weekend. So on Wednesday, July third, which is the day before the fourth. We'll sell our parking passes, uh, both online and in person at the Surf Club. And we will not sell passes again until Monday the, in person, you could still buy them online. So, you know, I just, you know, encourage everyone to have your parking pass prior to the third, if you wanna visit during the holiday weekend. Uh, as I said, residents will, residents only, will be able to purchase online, um. That entire weekend, and just show us your receipt as you drive down. Um, so we'll have, and it's worked very well the past three summers that we, uh, I stationed myself at the corner of. Of West Wharf and Surf Club Road.
You sure do.
Check the sticker, you know, with sticker, you keep going down West Wharf, and you could exit, um, Middle Beach. Uh, if you have a sticker, you can come, come on down, uh, you will not be able to purchase in person at all. That's no change from the past.
And this will be the third summer?
Third.
Yeah, and I think it's a really, really successful.
We don't have a ton of lines down, down Surf Club Road or West Wharf Road. And, you know, every year we do it, it'll get better and better, but it's, it's going really smoothly, uh.
We call it our special event.
Yeah.
Program, it is a special event weekend, so we can have special rules for special events, and, um. And I just encourage, plan ahead, July fourth is always a cr- crunch, you can't just wake up at ten o'clock on July fourth and say. You gotta plan ahead.
So you'll have three months to purchase your passes. And I wouldn't wait till the week before, I would, you know, I encourage you to do it. You know, in the next month or so, that would be, be helpful for everybody if we did that. And then the schedule for, uh, the weekend of the fourth, uh, the Concert on the Green. Was on the fourth with the rain date of July thirteenth, hopefully don't use that rain date, the parade is also on the fourth. And the fireworks are July fifth. So the biggest day is the fireworks day by far.
Yeah, it's like a Friday, the day after holiday. It's gonna be packed.
It's creating probably other issues, because it's a Friday.
Well, and we have a rain date for the fireworks too. The twelve, so. And, and just so the public understands, you know, we're dealing, first of all, the. The vendors or the supporters of the fireworks are the ones that book the dates, they just double check the town, so they're the ones controlling the schedule on that, as well as the. Concert on the Green, uh, so the town, uh, and, and they're limited. It's not optimal to have the parade and the concert on the same day, but given the scheduling of the orchestra and everything else, it was kind of like the whole date was gonna work. So that's kind of how it landed that way, and usually those two don't overlap too much. Yeah, I think it was a rain date was the problem.
I think the sound guy, I think it was the sound that they used. The original date was.
So, um, so, you know, I think, um, we'll start, you know, having that information, we always have a. Part of the website that has all the information, that, you know, we're gonna have the buses and everything, and we just can't control the weather or the fog.
And I'll come back, um, in June, maybe the, the first meeting in June, and maybe both.
Yeah.
And give another reminder to everybody.
Okay, then, I just have a couple things, well, first of all, thank you for offering the veterans passes and the senior passes. In case we have any folks that are new to town and maybe apply, what sort of paperwork should they?
Thank you.
Have available, and can they do those processes online, or do they need to come in person?
So if it's your first time getting one. You've come, you can come in person, and you could just walk in with your car registration, so. You're coming in your car, and driving in your car, just grab that registration before you come in.
Oh, you should have that in your.
So a driver's license is not enough, uh, you have to show proof of being a taxpayer. So if you have, um, car registration or your lease agreement, uh, mortgage statement. Um, something that shows that you're a taxpayer, if you're a, a renter. Um, you can show your, your rental agreement that you have, uh, we try to make it as, as easy as we can, the registration is the easiest thing probably for somebody to. To find, um. Unless you're with, in somebody else's car.
Or try to get multiple passes.
Right. And then obviously, senior passage, you're just looking at the birth date, um, veterans passes, do they need to bring D D two fourteen? Or anything like that with them?
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we will check that, um. We try not to make it difficult for people, but, yeah, we, we would check that.
Okay.
Usually they have some type of an ID on them as well.
Um, is that because I would say sixty percent of the passes are sold online at least, right?
Yeah, probably.
The lines are not very long.
Yeah, he said new to town, because we're getting a lot of new residents, just in case they can take advantage of. You know, any of these programs that we offer, that way they can come prepared, that's good.
And if anybody's, if you're brand new to town, and you have questions, feel free to call us, we'll walk you through the entire process, it's, it's pretty painless.
Austin, I'm curious, have you ever seen, uh, do you see a fair amount of, um, people with the same address, meaning. Renter at, at an address property, as well as the actual homeowners themselves?
Um, that's a good question, so you can be both.
Yeah.
So you could be the owner who then rents out.
Right.
The property as a, as a rental unit, um, I'm, I'm sure we have, yeah.
And I, and I think too, a renter has to be at least eight weeks, you have to have, or is it six weeks?
There is a number, I think it's six.
Yeah, six weeks, so if you're. Yeah, six weeks, so if you're renting a house for the summer and therefore more than six weeks, you get each pass. If it's less than six weeks, you're, you're a non-resident basically, so.
And then we also have owners purchase the daily passes.
Yeah.
And give them to.
And give them to the, include that in the rental fee of the charging. That makes it really easy for everybody if, if they do that. And the, the, the guest passes that residents buy don't expire. So if you bought a dozen of them last year and you only used five, you can reuse those.
Let's do it now.
Yeah, really.
And then, um, my only other question is, what is, um, our policy this year for out of town, non-resident passes?
So, uh, we will sell, add, we'll sell non-residents seasonal passes again. Uh, we sell a hundred of them. And we studied, last year was the first year to do that. Uh, and it's due to the, the Garden Point project.
Which is not completed, which is why we, we had to lay, so.
Right, that's why we have another.
We still, we have to still adhere to the grant.
So we sold a hundred and, um, you know, there's a lot of talk, you know, when we announced that we would have to do that, that you know, all 100 people will come on the same day and taking a hundred parking spaces. So we watched, they, they look a little different, they're circular instead of the shape that the resident ones are. So we, we hash marked that as people come in and the most we had in one day was 10.
Wow, okay.
And outside of those 10, it was like 3, 2, 6, it wasn't.
It's not.
No, and there was never more than 10 and, I think you were probably gonna say.
Yeah.
The whole reason that the state asks people, asks towns to do this is to allow access to folks who live, you know, in Northern Connecticut, you know, Middletown, Putnam, those areas that don't have access to the shoreline. And that's not the reality of it though, it's out of the hundred we sold, I have the numbers, but it was something like 85 were like Guilford, Bramford, Quinn. So we're following the guidelines set forth for us, but it's not, in reality, it's not, it's not playing out as I.
And it's not having a big impact on our operations, I think.
It's zero, zero.
The reality is that, you know, we, we all have friends and neighbors in the communities around us, so usually they wanna go to the birthday party or their kids wanna hang out. So the two parents can come and pull in, have their kids play, so. We have grandparents in one town.
That too, where people work, uh, non-residents work at businesses in town and wanna be able to come after work or on weekends. Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a problem.
How high was the demand for that, Austin, you, you mentioned all 100 got sold.
Yeah, it was.
They sold quickly.
A couple, there were a couple days, yeah. Most of them were sold day one. But I think, you know, within three or four days they were gone.
Right, and I think there was a lot of hype around it, so.
Cause they were sold out.
No, uh, that, it was a lot of hype around it, so people became.
Aggressive, aggressive.
Well, eager to get there, I would say that there was kind of. Yeah, there was more awareness, so, um, but, you know, the ra- reality is it hasn't, it doesn't have a big impact on the operations and I think it's, it's offering, you know. We're also not in the crazy town we were a couple of years ago, to be honest with the beach, it, we're gonna have bad days still. We always will, it's beautiful and people want to be beach, but, um, you know, it's gotten more normal to your point earlier, now that we're out of COVID and be able to travel and people going away for summer camps, you know, there's just a different dynamic now than it was like three years ago, like that, you know.
Yeah, East, East Wharf and West Wharf fill up, I mean, those are the beaches we have to close through the parking, they're the smallest parking areas. So if you get, and we, our gate guys will tell you, if you get to West Wharf and it's full or East Wharf and it's full, you drive, you know, a mile down the road to Surf Club and we have plenty of parking. So it's, it's really.
Close on a Saturday by 10 o'clock usually, I've been living here for almost 20 years. You know, a few other, they used to work on weekends or in the summer, you gotta get there early, you know?
It's really any beach, think I want a Rhode Island beach.
Yeah, no, it's the same thing, you gotta, I know.
It's neat to us.
Yeah, I think Hammond Acid only filled up maybe once last year. Um, so that, that's when we get into.
The overflow and people like, yeah.
And we do have better, I think, communication between the state beach and town now. So we can prepare and plan in advance, you know, a little bit better when that happens. And it, and it's gonna be weather, what if we have a brutal summer and lots of hot days and power outages and people are gonna wanna go to the beach a lot, that could change the dynamic.
And I'd like to bring up one more thing if I could, so, um, at the Surf Club, you know, we used to have a sailing program and we haven't had it in, you know, since before COVID. Uh, we tried for a couple of years to reinstitute it. Uh, we couldn't reach that number, it's a very expensive program to run. Uh, there's a lot of, um, dollars spent on boat maintenance and staffing. That, you know, we have to include into the, the registration cost, we just couldn't get to that magic number of the enrollment to even break even for it. Um, so these, these, you know, JY trainers and, and sailboats that we've had for that program uh, have been sitting at the Surf Club for, you know, five years now. So I would like to dispose of them, they're not usable, uh, for us. So I would like to get permission from the board to, uh, have a day or two at Surf Club where Madison residents can come and pick through them, um, for parts, take, take the boats if somebody's feeling really energetic and enthusiastic about putting one back together. Um, or they have a fleet of their own at home that they want to, uh, add to, uh, or just use for, for parts. I'd like to be able to do that so we can clean up those areas and make it look nicer as well.
There are no complete boats.
I've got a lot of complaints about the cycling this past year. But, you know, just like, why are we having those stuff flying around? I mean, I have received a few complaints as well.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that charter requires any disposition of town assets, we as a board have to vote on. So I can just put it on the next agenda as part of the consent agenda. You know, as long as you guys are good with that. But it's gonna be a high-profile event, right, and we'll probably get some people likewise, you know. Um, and I know there's a lot of emotion attached to the sailing program too, uh, cause it's, it was such a great, a big part of each and record. But I think Austin's, with these feedback, when we spoke about this last year, I think was if we were gonna, if we were to introduce it, we would need to probably find, we couldn't really furnish what's there at the state of the city.
When I was a kid, it was sunfish, they were sunfishes. That's what we, that's what we went out and tipped over it. It drifted out the flop this.
So I, I think that that would be an investment the town would still have to make if you wanted to bring their program back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so if you're good with that, that'll be on the agenda, next agenda, just to approve the disposition.
We've developed a, a whole harmless agreement that will have anybody sign when they come down, that's been, uh, vetted by our town attorney. So it'll, it'll be, you know, a couple Saturdays in, in April. We'll kill a bunch of birds at once, sometimes, being able to clean up the place.
Would you restrict it to Madison residents?
Yes.
Okay, great, well, thank you.
Tax save.
Oh wait, we have another thing for you. So, uh, oh no, wait.
12.
Are you gonna hang on for the cemetery things, or you don't really need to?
You're just approving people?
Yeah, and we're just gonna talk about the care, you know, maybe. Okay, so thank you very, oh, next thing. It's, I remember 12, discussion to accept a donation from Madison Little League in the amount of $30,740 for the Nelson Field Line Project by Port of Finance on 3/18/24.
So moved.
With our thanks.
Yes, indeed.
Lot, lots of thanks, um, excited about this.
So this, this final donation is for the electrical work. So we received, um, bids back. And I received, we've received two bids, uh, we, I think four folks came to the mandatory walkthrough. And Little League, you know, is pulling up their end of the bargain to, to fund that, um, you know, greatly appreciative of the families in town who participate in Little League and Little League Board. Chuck and Chris have done, you know, great work in partnering with us to make this a reality. So the first week of April, Musco will be down there. Uh, so my guys have laid all the, all the conduit. The past couple of weeks, so that, that part of the project's done. Musco will be here next week to install. And then the electrician will, um, do their part. And then, you know, mid-April, we'll be able to have a grand opening, we'll have a ceremony with Little League to flip the lights on. You know, lights are important there, especially for baseball when, in the fall, um, we can't really host any games except for on weekends. Uh, so everything's away, so families in town have to travel to different towns that have lights on their Little League fields, and now this will allow us to host big Little League games in, in the fall. Give kids an opportunity to play at night, which is really cool, that, you know, they, they typically don't get that opportunity to. So yeah, great partnership with the town and the local organizations to make this, make this come to fruition for everybody.
Okay, great, um, if all are in favor of accepting this, then we should say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, once again, thank you to Madison Little League for being a partner with us, um, so it's been great to see.
And this has been under discussion, guys, just for perspective, for like 20 years, I mean, it's been a long time coming. I mean, I was the Little League president for many, many years and this, this has been a conversation that, you know, and it's always been a, a, as Austin was saying, it's been an issue where we go to other towns as opposed to being able to do it in our town. I guess the one question I did have for you though, given that that's a baseball field, will the softball teams on a, on a 60 diamond be able to leverage it as well?
So usually softball's played on a skin diamond and not with grass and they, they wouldn't wanna do that. They get the turf at Paulson.
Yeah.
Huge for them to be able to, be able to play on the high school field and participate that way, but, um, you know, no, no plans to light that, that field as of now. It's, it's tough, baseball and softball, you know, very similar, but they play on two different fields.
All right, great, thank you, Austin. Moving on to item number 13, discussion to include the following special appropriations from unassigned fund balance, pending Port of Finance approval. Item number A, $100,000 to the capital on requiring expenditure fund to establish a project line either in this fund or small, but not purchases for the same amount. B, $100,000 to assigned fund balance for the future budget impacted requirements pension. And I just see $225,000 to the cost of resiliency fund for fiscal year '23, '24 and '24, '25 for recommendation of capital management program committee. Okay, and these are basically items that are coming through our budgeting process. We had, um, highlighted in our workshop that we've, uh, addressed, to address some budget issues as well as things that we just wanted to do. Particularly the, uh, cost of resiliency fund. Um, and then this was also mentioned in the board of selection presentation to the public or finance, um, of appropriations we wanted to pull. So any further questions, I mean, we talked about the fund and, you know, what this does for the, uh, pension, this is just helping us kind of uh, reduce the impact of the environment's pension on the budget by pre-funding some of the stuff.
Well, I would just add, I think all of these, all of these three special appropriations are attempts to mitigate impact to the operating budget in a variety of different ways. Otherwise, we would have to assign money out of the annual budget to each of these, to each of these funds, so they're all three uh, part of our attempt to keep the operating budget as small as possible.
And very thoughtful planning, I think, so, smart.
Yeah, and, and similar to what we've done previous years, um, so it's kind of, kind of the strategy that we maintain all the time is to keep things out of the operating budget as much as possible when they aren't recurring, right? So any other questions, I know Stacy's on, but, uh, no, we're good?
We're good.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Make it so, Stacy.
Uh, all right, thanks Stacy, unless you wanna hang around, talk about cemetery.
Thank you.
Um, item number 14, um, discussion of town cemeteries. So I, I thought this is, interestingly, this is something I thought I'd never been wrong with when I got this job. So I started learning about cemeteries. And.
Stacy doesn't wanna talk about cemeteries.
So I think, I don't actually have in front of me, Jeannie, can you put up what was sent in the board packet about the cemeteries? So we have a number of cemeteries in town. And, um, interestingly, the town actually doesn't own a lot of these cemeteries, most of them are private.
Yeah.
And even, uh, West Cemetery, which is the big cemetery on Route 1 that everybody knows, they have, you know, a big monument there. The town only owns the front portion and the back portion is actually, uh, Madison Cemetery Association. So, um, but, and so this kind of, I wanted to give you a summary and it kind of explains on here each of the different cemeteries and kind of who's in charge of them, right? So just to go real quickly, it's kind of, we're trying to get, make this information more digestible and easier for the public too. Cause a lot of people reach out to the town about some of these things and realize you gotta go to, you know, other places. So there's a, uh, East Side Cemetery that's, um, up near Camp Laurel, and that's actually officially closed now, it is not taking any new burials. Um, and it's really not accessible to the public, I think you have to go through Camp Laurel and you get permission.
Or my property, it's literally.
Or Walkman. Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's literally the path right back between my property and.
Right, but it's still like public access, I don't think it's something.
It's called, it's actually public access, it's called Old Cemetery Road, so there is a, a, access there. There may be some trees in the way. But yes.
And piles of rocks.
Yeah, people don't go back there anymore.
Okay. Um, so, and this was one I actually only recently found out about. And we were talking about, as we get into, you know, uh, Madison's, uh, bicentennial, we wanna start doing some historic things and I thought it'd be, it's very interesting, I guess, that I am.
Oh, good background, fun. It's really, it's like 700s back there.
So it's one of these things, it'd be kind of cool to bring in the different cemeteries and the history, so that's why I thought this was also a good topic to talk about, because that's really a lot of our history.
Yeah.
So then we have the Rockland Cemetery.
And naturally was maintained, I think that particular one was maintained by an Eagle Scout as well, there is a plot back there.
They've done projects there, I think, but, um, so, so the, the Rockland, um, is a town cemetery, um, and, but it is almost filled to capacity. And, um, you know, we do have some records for that, it, so this is another thing I learned about cemeteries, like they used to not record these other deeds, you get a deed when you buy a plot. But a lot of these private associations, it's just in their like plot art system. Okay, that are run by these private associations. With the town, they actually turn it into deed and things that you can put on the land record, so there'll be like an official record. So some of, there's been some issues about record keeping and things like that, so Rockland is a town one though, but we are reaching capacity there. And, um, Richan is our, uh, section for that. Then West Cemetery is the big one that I think most people know the most because it's very visible, it's down near the Surf Club, you know, on Route 1. Um, and the town is only, um, the front portion, the old section. And that is inactive, there's no new, uh, um, plots there. But there are plots available in the private section, but that is also filled, is what I've been told. And she actually put a number in there, 50 left or whatever, so if you wanna have a plot in Madison, you better get out and buy your plot, cause they're gonna be running out. So, you know, and this is a common big problem throughout Connecticut is, you know, and and now people are actually moving towards more cremation than, um, so it's, you can double them up. We had a lot of conversations about this, but, um, but it is an issue and then, um, so, but that, just so people understand that the town is only like responsible for the, the smaller, older piece and the larger piece is also its private cemetery association, but the problem with West Cemetery is that it's really, it's the Hans, they're the cemetery association. You can't get people to be involved in these anymore, and so they don't really have a fully staffed cemetery association. And I think it's been a little frustrating for some residents, but they, they, you know, the Hans have done a rich on managing it and it's not a criticism of them, but they're just, it's not, you're not gonna go and have like a board and a big cemetery association that you're dealing with, you might be familiar with other towns. You might be familiar with other towns, um, it's, it's basically the two of them running the cemetery. Uh, and then Hammond Asset, which is a beautiful, one of our old cemeteries as well, I don't know which is older. I'm guessing that the east side one is older than Hammond Asset. Um, that is still technically private, but the people who were running it have since passed on, there was a family that oversaw it. Hammond Asset through your, that's a family that was in charge of the cemetery association, so that is one where I think is a. Or we might need to consider taking over, there's no active management of it and Rich acts as the sexton for it. Um, but the records are a little bit, um. There are records and we have some information that we received from, uh, former members of the cemetery association, but. I think we need to figure out if we wanna, there's some actions we as a board could take o- take on and then we can like take over the cemetery. If we wanna, and we become a town cemetery, but we've been closing, so.
What does that mean when you're saying, take it over?
Well, it becomes public, well, so we're, we're basically taking care of it already, so we're, we actually, so Austin's not here, but, um. Our beach and rec, which, uh, oversees building and grounds, they do the mowing on town cemeteries, okay? Uh, and I think, oh, I, I shouldn't have mistaken words once, I think we're still kind of mowing at Hammond Asset. Just as a favor, um, but, you know, I feel like the cemetery, because of the records management is not great. And then the caretaking and the historic importance of the cemetery, I feel like the town might wanna take steps to actually make it a town cemetery. So then we, we could then go for grants to improve it, um, there's mapping that needs to be done. Cause the records are so poor in some areas of it to see what's there, um, so.
But who would do that, who would do the mapping and the?
Well, you can hire, yeah, you, and there's people who specialize in this, I mean, you can get volunteers to do it, and I think that might have been attempted a few years ago. But I don't know if we're really gonna get what you want out of that, you know, um, and so, and I'm not trying to, uh. I, I just think, you know, you might wanna consider. Doing that, there'll be steps that we would take to do that, um, because it's kind of in limbo right now.
Is there an owner of record for the land? Or is it literally a plot where that nobody owns?
There, it is, I, you know, that's a good question, I mean, I think the, I thought, I think it's like the association o- owns all the land. And then they sell off pieces of it to people who buy the plots, but there's basically a defunct association now. So there's like no one actively managing the cemetery, um, so if you are, if you already own a plot there. And, you know, a family member passes away and you need to do a burial, um, Rich has, you know, works with what the records he has and, and so there is records.
So he's sort of the cemetery association, I can help, and that's it.
Yeah, and he's not even in the, the cemetery association, I forget the han- family name that was responsible, and so I'm picking. I'm speaking a little off, uh, uh, off the cuff here, because I had a lot of meetings about this when I first started. And then I kinda dropped and pushed aside, but I feel like we were, the reason I brought this up is we had not been reappointing our sextons. Like technically, a sexton is appointed, they're the ones in charge of the cemetery, um, is supposed to be appointed by the Board of Selectment, I think, is it? Uh, Jeanie, is it every two years the sexton or is it four? Do you know?
Every two.
Every two, that's right, so we were kind of going through things and she was like, there hasn't, it's been like six years or whatever. Since some of these have been renewed, so, um, so I think we kind of started having this conversation. And I feel like we need to kind of organize better, make sure we're getting our sextons appointed appropriately. And then look at the, each of the cemeteries and figure out where there's management issues, and then I think we need to talk about, um. Uh, succession issues, because the Hans, then Richan, they're going to wanna retire, and there's, no one wants to be sextons.
It's not a coveted business.
No, it's not a coveted business, and a lot of communities have gone to like hiring funeral homes have now gotten, like this is of that and stuff, so. Um, so those are all conversations I think we need to start thinking about, and also, does the town feel needs more money for a cemetery? And we need to plan for that, because we are running low in terms of capacity at our existing cemeteries. Uh, so this is the start of a conversation.
Can you, are we statutorily obligated to take over the administration of a defunct private cemetery?
I think there is an obligation on the, on, on our part, and that's where, we looked at this a couple of years ago. And I'll, I'll have to bring back Town Council, I remember talking to them, that there's kind of like responsibility, right? That it is a community, uh, town government, that we would have to make sure that these things are maintained and managed. And so that was the reason we talked about Hammond Asset, which is a little bit in limbo right now. Um, some of the other ones have active, some of the private cemeteries, they have, you know, cemetery associations, they have wards. I met with the, um, members of the different cemeteries on here, um, and so it's really. Um, I would say Hammond Asset, and then I think we need to look for the future for West, um, about what we, for West Antwerp. Um, about, you know, what would happen with those, since there's still, you know, some plots, uh, so. And, and the other thing that it was kind of, you know, people will go in and buy like eight of these things, right? Thinking that all their family's gonna wanna, you know, I want my family around me, I'm gonna buy all these plots, and then they end up feeling like we're gonna get married or they're gonna move away. Or they don't use it, but then the plot's just sitting there, you know, so there's kind of this inventory that's sitting there that's unused also. I'm just kind of working through all this, um, so, um, so tonight, no decision, I just wanted to open the conversation up.
Hey, at least we have an inventory of them at this point, now where they are.
Yeah, we have, we have the, we have a better list now of the, um, and then I think I, I would like to look into what would be involved. If we were to take over Hammond Asset, a- and it's not derelict, right, it's well-kept, it's a beautiful place and it's an important part of our history. But, you know, you wanna make sure that people can find their, um, you know, which I'm not trying to say that they can't. That is definitely, we have records and, and people have had no issue having burials in Hammond Asset, um, but. There's no really official organization overseeing it, so, um. And, and it's, the, the sexton has done a great job maintaining it, um, but, so I think we should probably think about what we might wanna do with that. You know, in the future.
Well, I guess it's good to explore the options and figure out what the pathway is.
Yeah, yeah, and it maybe that isn't the right path, but at least we can talk about it, and then, and then I wanna get us on a regular. Appropriate schedule for the appointment of the sextons, which is what the next, uh, the next, um, uh, item is. Uh, so if that's good, this'll be further the conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, um, item number fifteen is discussion to act on to improve the following sextons to public cemeteries. Rich, Richard Han, Indian East Cemetery, term expiring January first, twenty twenty-six. Rich Han to Rockland Cemetery, term expiring January twenty-first, twenty twenty-six. Rich Han West Cemetery, term expiring January first, twenty twenty-six, Rich Han Hammond Asset Cemetery, term expiring January first, twenty twenty-five. There was some reason that the date was not there, I can't remember why, and then Ed Roman, West Side Cemetery, term expiring January first, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second, okay.
I just wanted to ask Peggy, is there a job this for me? Do, do we know what the duties are?
The, of the sextons, um.
I don't.
I mean, I kind of generally, I mean, I, they basically oversee the burial process and the selling of, well, usually associations, I guess, sell, but they oversee the burial process. And make sure that, like, the coordination efforts, um.
And, um, uh, what, what's the compensation issue?
Uh, that is a fair question, off the top of my head, I don't know, I mean, I think they get paid through the burial process. So the town is not paying a salary to them.
Okay.
Uh, so they earn their fee through the burial process, um.
A strange incentive.
Yeah, I know.
So the fee, so basically from the funeral home, funeral home would compensate them?
Uh, yeah, I guess, it, it was probably like a fee to like, open the plot and close the plot, and it probably is. I would think maybe wrapped up in that, and I think also selling the plot, so, um. I, it's a, it's a question, I probably asked that two years ago, and I don't remember what the answer is, but, but that'll be something that we can talk about later too. Because it's not, it's, it's not in our budget, you know, uh, sexton, so, um, and, and so, um. All, so with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, and I also just wanna say thank you, uh, for those who are willing to do this, this is becoming a. Uh, a profession that people are not pursuing, obviously, and we're grateful for the, I mean, Richan has been doing it for forty years or something, you know? Um, yeah, um, and, you know, it's an important part, obviously, it's, it's community service, it's incredible. So I'm grateful that we have somebody who is capable and willing to do that, but it's, you know, people move on in life and they wanna retire. So we'll have to figure it out from there, um. All right, and with that, then I guess moving on to any sit, hands raised, uh, Jeanie, citizens' comments?
Nope.
No hands raised?
Nope.
Okay, all right, well, with that, I guess here, no objection, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.